Get the party started. So hello, everyone. This is attorney Robin McCoy with Political Coffee with Robin and Tracy, and we have our special guest, Commissioner Monique Baker McCormick. So, welcome, and I'll turn it over to Attorney Martin.
Yes, thanks for that great introduction, Robin. I'm, you know, very, I just feel very blessed to be a part of this show and working with you, Robin. You know, I looked at our episodes that we've logged so far, and we're on episode twenty-three with our great guest today, Commissioner Monique Baker McCormick, a personal friend of both of ours. And Commissioner McCormick is a Democrat. She's a mother, a veteran of the U.S. Army, a businesswoman, and has a master's degree in business from Walsh College of Business and Accountancy. Now, on November sixth, twenty eighteen, Commissioner McCormick's birthday and tenth year of advocating for residents of Northwest Detroit, she was elected as Wayne County Commissioner in District Six, my neighboring district. I'm in District Eight, I believe. And today, we're going to talk about some hot-button issues, including the war on trash. You know, this month is Earth, we celebrate Earth Day. Some people are trying to turn it into Earth Month, and we're going to talk about Commissioner McCormick's unanimously-approved Youth Council. Can't wait to hear more about that. The new Justice Center that's rising in the horizon in the city of Detroit and Wayne County, and the budget. Welcome, Commissioner McCormick, and how are you today?
I am great. Thank you so much for having me. I am on the air with the best and greatest attorneys in Metro Detroit. So, thank you. Thank you for the invitation to Political Coffee. And I have my cup.
What is your mouth say? Yeah, what is your, what is, what's in your, you've got your name, and what are you, what are you drinking?
Yes, um, I am drinking alkaline water.
Okay, and then I've got and I, I decided to switch it up. I have a U of M mug, which is my alma mater for law school. And then, as far as tea, I have the Robos Tea, which is the red bush tea that's big and very popular in South Africa. And then I have my Buddha Tea, which is my, you know, it's burdock root, which is very good for helping with feminine issues, things of that nature. So, um, yeah, so that's what I, and I always have a little bit of honey and lemon.
Yeah. I like how you two are on that same wavelength, Robin, you with your gold U of M mug, and you, Commissioner McCormick, with that black and gold. That's always so classy. I love it. And I brought with me today my YouTube mug to remind everybody to like, comment, share, and subscribe to our new YouTube channel, Political Coffee. Actually, I have two mugs. The other mug is my Serenity Mug. And the reason why is because this actually came broken. You probably can't see it. So, um, they're sending me out another one. I got it from, um, Look Human, and they were great about it. They said, oh, you don't have to send it back. We'll just send you out a new one. But I thought it was pretty cool, you know, since we're on YouTube and to remind everybody, so.
Yeah. And so my, my mug, it actually says Baker McCormick twenty-ten. So this always reminds me of where I came from.
Really?
So, the first time I ran for Commissioner was actually in twenty-eighteen, well, in, in two thousand eight. And then, and, and then I really gained momentum in that first election. And this is when I met my, uh, competition, like officially, where he told me, little girl, go sit down somewhere, because you know who I am. And this is where this cup came, because I was like determined at that point in twenty-ten to continue to run until I won. And so, ten years later,
Okay.
I won my commission seat, um, in twenty-eighteen. So, this cup always reminds me. And in fact, this, um, I gave out these cups on, uh, my fortieth birthday.
Really?
My birthday celebration to everyone, because my birthday is in November, November, uh, sixth, as you indicated earlier. So it's always around election time, and, um, you know, I always celebrate, um, with others because it's so close to election time.
Yeah, that's right. Election Day. And so that means you're a Scorpio, doesn't it, Commissioner?
I am. I have to admit, I am a Scorpio.
Yeah, we're, you know, and Tracy and I, we're, we're Scorpio sisters. We share a Scorpio birthday.
Right.
When is your birthday? When, when are they?
The twenty-sixth.
Yeah, on the twenty-sixth. You know, I'd say that's the power sign, you know, for political women, which is not to say that if you're not a Scorpio, you're not powerful. But I just noticed there's this trend line where a lot of powerful women who are in politics, whether they're elected officials such as yourself, Commissioner McCormick, or working behind the scenes or in media, like Attorney McCoy and myself, are very powerful. I mean, you know, we had First Lady who ran for president who's Scorpio, Hillary Clinton, and this goes on and on.
Yes, yes, we are powerful women.
That's great. But no, back to that story, I'm so glad that you related that because, um, that's something that I really bonded and connected with you on. Because, you know, we had a guest formerly on Political Coffee, Representative Sheri Gay-Degno Go, who had a big event, uh, this morning on expungements. You know, Michigan's rolling out, uh, the new clean slate laws tomorrow. And, um, you know, we had this conversation about people not coalescing around female politicians, and even, you know, people who are in the world of politics, um, actually undermining women who want to run. And I'm so glad that you were persistent and committed and dedicated and stuck to, um, your ethics and your, it really was, I think, a calling, you know, for you to run. And I know on my former show, Politics and Power, I had you on, and we talked about that a little bit. And I'm just so glad that you won, um, and you're winning, and you're just serving your constituents so well. I really applaud you, and.
Yeah, and Monique, I've known you for a number of years. You've been very active with the Black Women Lawyers of Michigan as a member. And so, um, you know, I'm excited to see, um, how you persevered. And yes, it's, it's very good for our audience to hear these, these, uh, this testimony from you, because, you know, I, you know, I'm the vice chair for the Michigan Democratic Women's Caucus, and we, we are trying to encourage more and more women to run for office. We find that women are way, we're way more qualified than, than some of these men out there that are just foolish. And, um, I'm not saying there are good men out there, but there are some foolish men out there. I mean, you look at, they're going after Gates now. You're seeing all the foolishness. And so, it's like, but there's women that are, um, they are qualified, they have all kinds of credentials, but they get intimidated by politics, politicians, and they don't get in the game. And then, when we have some of the fools running the country, that's how we, you know, women have to come in and help clean up the mess. You know, black women, we talk about black woman wisdom. If it wasn't for black women, we wouldn't have Biden and Kamala in office right now, you know?
That is so true. That is so true. But, you know, just going back to, uh, the story that I started with, and one of the reasons why I wanted to ensure that Wayne County had a youth program to bring young people into the folds of politics early, and especially young women, uh, because I wasn't helped in that way. I mean, I had female politicians around, uh, but they weren't really willing, and still not willing, to, to reach back and help and pull the next person up. Um, they want to.
That is so, Commissioner. Why do you think that there's not this sisterhood? And I'm going to digress for just a moment, because there is a CNN anchor named Brooke Baldwin, who has a new book out called Huddle. And the premise is that women who huddle and help each other can achieve great things. Uh, one example was, I think, was it in Alabama, where, where there was a slate of women, black women who ran for judge, and I think all of them won. And so, why do you think women, some women in politics are not reaching back or reaching across or over to help their sisters?
Right. And I, and you know what? And, and I, I don't think it's just politics, but I do know in my world right now and in the past, uh, even, eh, you know, you know what? I won't name names. But I will say that even today, uh, as I work with some of my colleagues, it's very difficult. And I believe, I, I, the only thing that I can think is that they are afraid to let go, um, because maybe they, they weren't helped either. And so, they're like, I wasn't helped, so I'm not going to help anyone else. Um, and, and then there's the fear of being pushed out. You know, if, if, if I lose my space or power, then I, you know, that, I believe, they believe that their position of power, uh, makes them, or it either breaks them. And so, unfortunately, I didn't come from that perspective. I was a business owner, still a business owner. I have a real estate brokerage that I've had for twenty-five years. And so, I don't, I don't have a need to hold on to that. And in fact, I don't want to be Commissioner forever. You know, I want to reach back and, and say, okay, I'm going to teach this person over here, and then help them come into, uh, politics and, and have my seat. And then I move on. And I just think that that's how we can build up our community, uh, and build up our young people, uh, by, by reaching back and, and, and don't have this, uh, this, uh, hold on, on a seat that isn't yours. It, it, it reminds me so much of what my predecessor told me, like, I had to go somewhere else if I ever wanted to be Commissioner. Uh, literally said that, said that to the world.
You say you, he, that you would never beat him, and, uh, yeah, I, wow, and.
That is so, yeah. That's, that's toxic. That's so unnecessary. I mean, I think that, you know, I look at, for me, where, the way I've been able to do, what I've been able to do is because people lifted me up. I had family, I had support that lifted me up. And then, it's important that when you get lifted up, that you reach back and you help people. That's why I love working with young people. I've been working with some young people that, um, helping them to apply and get into law school. Um, you know, with Black Women Lawyers, we've been working to mentor young attorneys and bring them into the fold. And, you know, and then encouraging young people to run for office, and even some of ourselves to run for office. It may not be as motivated because of some of the toxicity that's out there, like, okay, still do it. Because if you get, you know, when you get there, you can make such a world of difference. So, yeah, and I, as, you know, I was looking over your, your background, Monique. Even though I know you, I mean, I, having looked at your background, it's, it's just very impressive, especially when talking about the war on trash. Like, uh, my partner and I, during the pandemic, we, when the weather is warm, we go outside, and then we see stuff out littering and like, and I'm like, and we're in Belleville, Van Buren Township, and it's like, okay, and kids are saying they don't have anything to do. Okay, there's, there's stuff to do. You can go out and clean up your neighborhood. That's something. And you can exercise. And, I mean, my mom, Nurse Pam, shout out to Nurse Pam, she had me doing all kind, I was doing sports. I went and did a three-mile run, and I came back, and I was doing a thirteen-mile run walk for the March of Dimes. And it was like, that was just the name of the game in our house, you know?
Well, Robin, you mentioned a couple of things. And, and so, I'd like to start with the Youth Council, though, because that was something, a resolution, and an initiative, a program that was unanimously approved. And, um, what does that entail exactly? The new Wayne County, um, Youth Council?
So, the Wayne County Commission Youth Council is a group of young people that we appoint to the council, uh, to represent young people in their area. So, there's fifteen different commissioners. Each commissioner gets two young people to bring on to or appoint to the council. Uh, each year, they are tenth through twelfth grade, and they have to be, uh, a resident of Wayne County in, in a res, or either in a Wayne County, uh, school. Um, and so, these young people come together, and it was a fortunate thing, you know, we, we can all look at COVID as, as this horrible thing that happened to us, and it, and it is. But at the same time, there's some positive things that we all know that came out of it. We got to slow down a little bit, you know, we got to, to take care of ourselves, uh, a little bit better. Uh, but in, as far as the council was concerned, the hardest part was figuring out how to bring these young people together on a regular basis. And here comes Zoom, right? Zoom was perfect. So, kids from Belleville and from, uh, from Rosehill, uh, from Wayne Count, from, from the Detroit metro area, they could all come together on Zoom, and they could talk about the issues that impact young people. And then they could come up with a resolution to res, resolve that issue. What is the main issue that you see that impacts young people right now, current, not in the past?
Resolutions been adopted? Have some of the resolutions?
We just adopted the very first Wayne County Commission Youth Council Resolution that talked to youth mental health and suicide. Yes. Yes. And they talked about in their resolution, what changes they wanted to see. They wanted to see some things that happen in the educational institution. So, in their schools, they wanted more programming. They wanted to talk about mental health and make it so that it's not just a stigma, this negative stigma, you know, that, you know, if you can't talk about it, it's a secret. And, um, and, and students and young people were afraid to talk about it, still afraid to talk about it. Then, we wanted to ensure, or they wanted to ensure, that there were peers that, people that looked like them in the school that talked about the issues and said, yes, I am affected mentally by what's going on right now. Or, you know, my father or mother passed away early, and I'm dealing with mental health issues. Um, and so, people that looked like them in their same age could come together in peer counseling. And so, those are some of the things that they talked to in the resolution. And so, the follow-up to that, because the program starts in September, well, actually, the official first, uh, session is in October. But, uh, they can apply in August, and then the commissioners appoint in September. And, and in October, that's when they first have their first session. But, um, from October until April, this is where they do all of that work. They come together in groups, they talk and discuss. We have panelists that come into the meetings to talk about, you know, politics and, and what, you know, what different, uh, positions entails. We had, uh, our Commission Counsel come in and talk about what her job was as Commission Counsel. We had the, the, uh, clerk of the Commission come in and talk about what she does. So, they understood how to also, uh, write a resolution. What is a resolution? What can a resolution do for us? And so, they really got into the, the thick of that, you know, of, of all of Wayne County. Um, how many commissioners there are? What, um, uh, what do we do as commissioners? Uh, what is the, the boundaries of Wayne County? So, they learned all of that stuff during the, uh, is it six months that we, that, that we were in session? And, um, and, and that's really what it was all about, learning about government, and also helping them, uh, to come up with a resolution and learn how to, how to put a resolution together.
And so, that's great. And is the commission taking applications now?
So, the application's open in August.
August.
And, yeah. And so, the commissioners, again, in each, uh, Commission District, gets to pick two, um, from their application pool, and, and then we go from there.
And then, when does the, when does the commission usually meet? Like, what is the term for the commission? Like, and how often?
So, we meet year-round. We never stop, uh, meeting. Um, and our meetings are the first and third Thursdays at ten AM each month. First and third Thursday, ten AM. We are, uh, all remote, you know, we're, uh, using Zoom uh, for our meetings. So, you can always pop in now, which is a great thing. Because one of the other things that, eh, when I first became Commissioner, is I wanted us to open up the commission uh, and be more transparent, so that people knew what we did. Because that was the reoccurring question all the time, is like, what does the commission do? What, you know, how do they impact our community? A lot of people know what the city council does, but they never know or didn't know what, uh, the commission did. And we're, we're set up much like the city council is to the mayor, you know, the check and balance of government. You have the legislative and the executive branch. We are the legislator, legislative branch of Wayne County. We ensure that all of the various departments, uh, uh, heads and, and the budgets of those departments, everything is running, uh, efficiently and affecting, effectively, and that our tax dollars are being spent, uh, in the right way.
Okay.
And so, um, yeah, so that's really the, you know, how we, we're set up and when, when we meet, so, yeah.
And do you notice citizen participation up in your, your Zoom meetings? Are, are, do you notice more people coming in, zooming in, and watching the process?
I do, because I think we're remote and people can Zoom in, um, you know, in a regular session where we would be downtown at the Griswold location. Again, when I came in, I wanted us to be out in the community, because we are required to have so many meetings a year in the community. And so, we had the first one right before COVID. Uh, we had one in, in, um, in Rosedale Park area. That was in my district, and, and that's what I wanted to ensure that people got a feel for what we did, and they didn't have to go downtown. Uh, but we had usually in a physical meeting from outside of, of, you know, of the staff and, uh, of those who work for Wayne County. We probably had maybe ten to fifteen visitors, maybe, if that. Um, depending on the topic. Now, sometimes if we had a hot topic, people, you know, okay, there were more people in the meeting. But usually, about ten to fifteen. Uh, now, you can see about, I would say, fifty additional people in the meeting.
Wow.
So, it made a difference. And so, what I was recommending is maybe we have some, uh, Zoom meetings even after. Although, that's more of a political hot button, because we're, uh, uh, we, we actually are mandated by law to have physical meetings, because we're open to the public, uh, unless we can, can change that.
But I think you can do both now, right?
Yeah, you could do both. You could have it in-person, but have it accessible to the public, like, like Tracy mentioned at the outset. Um, yeah, have a hybrid, like Sheri Gay-Degno Go, she did an expungement event with people in person. And then I, I, uh, participated virtually as a pre-screening attorney to assess people's eligibility. So, it was, it's a hybrid.
And actually, that's what we're discussing now, is to set up. So, we didn't have the technology. We don't have the technology to do both in, in a, in the commission chambers. And so, we would then have to, uh, set, make sure that the technology is there for us to, to implement that. So, yes, we definitely could do both in, in, um, in the long term, and I hope that we will be able to set that up, and we should be able to. But not just strictly Zoom. You, you see what I'm saying?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I checked out the commission website the other day, and I noticed, um, that, uh, the Zoom sessions for the, um, I think the committee sessions, the separate committee sessions were listed.
Yes.
And you chaired one the other day, because you, you chair a certain committee. Tell us about that.
I do. I was appointed to, uh, Health and Human Services a, as the Chair of, uh, that committee in January. I was formerly, that, thank you, thank you. I was formerly the Chair of the Special Committee on Seniors and Veterans. Um, and so, we, you know, we did some movement, uh, the first of the year. And so, uh, it's a little, I, I'm getting used to it. Um, Colleen was the Chair, Commissioner Tim Colleen, for a very long time. And, uh, I was recently appointed. And, uh, there's a, yeah, some, some things that I have to get used to, and I think they have to get used to me and the way in which I, uh, run my meetings. So, yeah.
Hey, everybody's got their own style, and it all works. That's great.
Yeah.
That's great. And what about this war on trash? You know, um, it's April, as we know, and April, traditionally, Earth, uh, Day is celebrated, and there's a movement to have the entire month of April be Earth Month. And I tell you, when the snow disappears, and although we don't get that much of it anymore, you see all of this trash in Detroit and Wayne County, along the side of the freeways, and it looks absolutely appalling. But you, Commissioner, have declared a war on trash, and tell us all about what your war on trash means and how citizens can get involved.
Yeah. So, um, it takes my daughter to really, uh, my daughters to talk about me, because when they were growing up, literally, we would be out in the community cleaning up with brooms and dust pans, and, you know, I would make them get out the car, and we would get to cleaning, you know? And so, it, it, it's just a pet peeve of mine to see our community trash. I grew up in Northwest Detroit, born and raised. Uh, every school that I went to was a Detroit Public School, right in Northwest Detroit, from John R. King, Luddington. I went to Henry Ford. Hey, Trojans.
Yeah, Henry Ford. I did one of my first programs on what to do when stopped by the police in Detroit, and it was at the Henry Ford.
Oh, really? Yes, yep. So, I graduated from there, and, and so, all I know is Northwest Detroit all my life. And I have never, ever, ever seen so much trash in this community. And I believe in statistics show that where there is trash, or where there is more trash, there's more crime.
Now, why do you say that? What's the connection? What's the nexus between traction and crime?
Crime. So, it's, it's the, they did a Berkeley study at the University of Berkeley. And I, you probably heard of the broken window, uh, syndrome, right? That if you, if, if they park a car in a neighborhood, and they sit it there and let it sit, then, i- in the cars in good shape, good condition, then most likely, it, nothing happens to it. But if you leave it there and you break the window, then what you see is that people will come by, and they'll start breaking more windows. Okay? And it, it's, it's something, i- i- I guess in our mindset, that, that tells us to trash something that's already trashed, right? And so, when you see paper and trash on the ground outside, then people come by and more people start throwing trash. Oh, well, this is a, you know, this is where we can throw our trash out, and we can keep trash in the neighborhood.
That's insane, yeah.
And but, but that's how people think. It, it continues to happen. And then, trash equates to people that don't care, right? Oh, people don't care about this area. Oh, okay, well, I can, now I can, th- this house is sitting here next to this trash, and let's break the windows in the house. And then, oh, okay, we can. And then, oh, okay, we can break into that house next to it because they don't care. You know, and it's easy access. The police don't care. We see all this trash. And so. It it's a cycle of a of a mentality that is formed. And that's what the study showed is that where you saw more crap trash in certain areas. Then you see more crime.
So that's why it's important to break the cycle.
To break the cycle of trash in the neighborhood is very, very important. And so I've been working with the city from day one when I became commissioner. I started working with the city uh because we don't have jurisdiction over. Trash collection, uh cleanups in the city of Detroit. Each municipality has its own. Uh trash company. The other than the the main mile roads which Wayne County. Uh uh services like Six Mile, Seven Mile, Otter Drive, those are county roads.
Okay.
Side streets are city roads and that's where we have most of the problems. Uh or either along the the service drive uh around the freeway. Where people come up off the freeway and then they'll just drop their bottles out the window. Um trash or when they're leaving McDonald's, they'll throw out their stuff, their whole bag.
I have a question. So we know that in Detroit. Uh annually, there's the Motor City Makeover. I typically participate in it with my block club. Um but even if the Wayne County Commission wanted to have its own. Uh like Wayne County Commission Makeover, you couldn't because there's no jurisdiction there. Is that correct?
Well, well, we can have like so.
Would you have to partner with the cities?
That's right, that's right. So in in most cases, unless it's on a mile road. So we we do have uh, you know, we do have our own public service department. Where where we have and I've asked uh our constituents or community groups. To actually um adopt a road and you can adopt. It's like Six Mile, which we have, and then we'll go and clean up areas around Six Mile. We can do that, Wayne County. But but if it's a a a side street, you know, or something like that, uh that would be the city. And then we partner with the city. And that's what I've been trying to do from day one. Is to get the city, the state and the county to coordinate their efforts. So that around the freeways, it it's always a hot button because one part is the state. One part is the county, one part is the city. So you have this issue where whose is it? When when it's time to clean it, clean up around the freeway. So the service drive is the city, which what happens is trash on the service drive blows over. To uh the freeway and then that's the state. And then the county has the up ramps. And coming up and it's just so crazy. So you get all of this trash and nobody wants to take. Hold of it and get, you know, and 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 get rid of it because of all of the politics. So. I brought them together and said, look, what what can we do? So what I'm asking is that we have continuous uh efforts to clean up, not just one. Once a year ma- Motor City Makeover. We need a monthly cleanup, right?
Regular because like, cuz I think like what I do with the when the criminal courts, they have it set up where they they do the workforce. And they have it where the the um folks are they they go to the jail and they'll volunteer for the whole day and they go pick up the trash on the side of the roads. But the last I heard of uh that 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 they didn't have enough people to do the supervision.
That's right.
When I go to places like, I went to the um DNC convention in two thousand eight to Denver. And it was beautiful. It was pristine. And I'm like, Michigan is beautiful too. We can be, we can be just as beautiful. Like, why? You know, what's going on?
I know, and I I think I I think too is that we're just not focused on that. It's just not. Priority for whatever reason. I'm not sure why it's not. Why do you want people coming into your state or city? Or county and they see trash all around on the freeway? It's like, what is this?
It looks terrible. It looks terrible. And when I travel and yeah, I've been out to. Uh Colorado too, Denver, Summit County, Breckenridge and Robin, you're right. It's just pristine. Listen, there are places here in Michigan, it's pristine. So I don't understand why, you know, like in the Detroit and the inner suburbs. It is just horrific. And I don't know why there isn't more of a priority. This is uh, you know, Earth Day Month, so. Why isn't there more of um interest except for and an effort except for what's coming? From, okay, we have the Motor City Makeover and your efforts, Commissioner McCormick. So are there any events coming up? And oh, this is a two-part question. Are there any events coming up? And I noticed those beautiful trash cans that are in your district. And I wish we could have some in our district. How do you go about getting those trash cans? Because I believe. If people see the trash cans, it might be a visual cue. Oh, I should throw my trash in these trash cans.
I would have known too for our for our region, Van Bier and Belleville. We need it. We need to emulate. We need to take your model, Monique, and emulate. It in the whole county and, you know, the weather is nice. It's it's good exercise. So we need to make this a movement. So we can just clean up the whole county. So cuz Michigan has so much potential. We have water. It's green. It's beautiful, but it shouldn't be. It's like Wayne County is like a, it's like a depressed environment. And just like we do expungements, helping people to. Clear up their records. We need to clean up the, clean up the the county.
That's right. That is so true. And so uh again, what I've tried to do is work with. Uh each of the municipalities in uh the also the the state and the city. To come up with the effort that we can do and work on together. Um so with the law department, what their goal was and what we talked about. Is that we would come up with a P S A.
Okay.
A public service announcement that talks about trash. Um I grew up on what you, I know you did too. And and that was don't be a litter bug, right?
Right.
Hear that all the time, but we don't hear anything like that anymore. We don't have any. Anti-littering signs. So instead of somebody putting a sign up, I'll buy your house, which by the way is illegal. And there's an effort to keep people from putting up un- uh warranted and and unauthorized signage. Those are all yard signs, political yard signs is just stuck on public property is illegal. But people don't know it because we're not telling them that this is illegal. Uh although people should know that throwing a piece of paper out of the window. Or trash or their whole food bag is not is is illegal, but is also just like, really?
Nah, it's like a lack of home training, a lack of.
Right, how do you do that? So what I've wanted to do is is also look for enforcement. Oh, yes, it will be difficult giving out tickets, but if we start with a P S A. And try to enforce it that way. And we also could put uh cameras at certain locations. We could also have uh uh the public participate where they see somebody throw out something. Maybe they have a dash cam that caught them. They can send that in. Uh there's a a a whole uh uh uh. There's various ways that we can implement these programs, but we have to have the buy-in. And that's what I've been having a difficult time have getting this buy-in. Now, the trash cans I purchased with uh monies that from my own budget to put out in the neighborhoods. And the funny thing, it was such a success uh that that the trash cans were were filled. Now, I had community volunteers to help in emptying most of the trash cans, but what happened. Is it became overwhelming for those those folks in the community. And they're like, why are we being trash collectors? And we're paying the city to do this. And so. I I I couldn't get them and I couldn't honestly ask them to keep doing this. Because literally those trash cans would be overflowing. So then I had to ask the city to come in and empty all the trash can. At cans and then I had to beg them to, can you just put out trash cans that are boated down? In the areas where we had the the war on trash, trash dispensers. And they did. So now you'll see more trash cans throughout the community. If you if you look around. You'll see permanent boated down trash cans at the bus, bus stops at at uh high traffic areas. You'll see them now. So we removed our.
Is that just in District Six or uh?
Well, I would assume that other areas uh. You know, that they have the the permanent bolted trash cans as well. Um but I do know I've been fighting for them in this district. So they did finally get those uh a permanent trash can. So we collected all of mine. Because the, again, we couldn't keep up with with that, so.
Right.
I live in, you know, as we're talking about trash, I can't help but bring up the fact like where I live in Van Bier and Belleville is. We have it where you can recycle. We have green recycle bins. I mean, that's even taking it further. We should be recycling. You can recycle certain items that we we just need to clean up Michigan. But sorry, Tracy, I interrupted you. You wanted to, you were bringing up something else.
Well, I just um, you know, back to the trash cans, I they're just for first of all. You know, when you hear a trash can, usually you think of something that's rubbery and smells, but these trash cans are actually beautiful. And uh they've got these um messages on them and graphics that really encourage people to uh throw their litter in the trash can. So kudos to you, Commissioner, on doing that. I don't know if you designed those or hired a designer, but I I find them very. But I don't see them in my district. I'm going to ask my commissioner about that, who is also the chair of the Wayne County Commission. Um and uh, you know, I encourage people to participate in meetings so that they can, you know, bring these issues up. But we know in our waning time, I do want to um first ask you, when is this P S A on the War on Trash coming up? Do you have any?
Yeah, so we talked about it pre-COVID and so I just uh spoke with. Uh the the law department area to see when they would be rolling it out because it is a city's initiative. For residents of Detroit and supposedly it was sometime this month uh in April. Now, if that's gonna happen, I don't know. I will be following up with them. I wanted to give them a little time. Uh this has been a two, this is actually going into the third year um uh initiative. And so uh hopefully we'll we'll get it done sometime soon because we, that's what we did cuz it's insane. To keep cleaning up after people and we're not trying to teach them better. And so that was one of the parts of the War on Trash that I really uh was proud of. Is that we were in Detroit Public Schools in the area too. That was the other part of it is that we went in and we. Uh got uh student ambassadors for the War on Trash and their their goal was to make sure that they. We actually had trash cans on uh site at that school and their job was to direct. Students and and staff to use the trash cans that were there on the outside as they're leaving. So cuz sometime you'll see trash around the school cuz kids get out and they start throwing paper or whatever. So we actually had trash cans and um gave the ambassadors, you know, T-shirts and we signs and all of that. So this was to teach another whole generation about loving where they live. We also planted tulips at the schools. That participated too. So it was all um, you know, just love where you live, you know, take care of your environment. Uh respect it, you know, so.
Yeah, we need to emulate that. I mean, county, city, statewide, we need that across the board. Start with them young in the school. I mean, definitely your model. I think it's excellent. And I did see from your profile that you were honored with the Most Supportive Realtor Politician Award. By the Greater Detroit uh Realist Association and it says a fair housing and civil rights advocacy organization for African-American real estate professionals. So you know, some of the things that have been talked about in the news is about Detroit and homeownership and. Um what can you tell our audience about efforts to just improve homeownership for black folks in in this in Detroit? And in the the greater Detroit area, the metro area?
Well, one of the things, a matter matter of fact, you guys might be able to help get the word out. Because as we, you know, face this pandemic, we lost a lot of people, right? You know. Five hundred plus thousand people throughout the United States. And probably what, at least in Detroit, we're probably at about two thousand people in just in Detroit alone. And a lot of them were in Northwest Detroit. And 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 I say this because all of. Uh or many of them owned a home, right?
Okay.
And many of them probably didn't have a trust or will set up, right? And then what happens when you don't have a trust or will? You both know that then it goes to probate, right? And then the family gets entangled in whose house it is. And then what happens? You have to sell it. Right? You gotta sell it and divide up the proceeds. There goes another home that was owned probably for fifty, sixty years. By uh an African-American person because now you have people from other communities. Outside of Detroit coming in buying these properties. You have investors, you have other folks.
And even internationally, Commissioner, you've got.
That's right.
These landlords are overseas, you know. I can't tell how many eviction cases I've been called on. And the owners uh don't even live in the United States.
Right. Have no respect for the community, no history. So we lose our. Our equity, we lose uh legacy, we lose so much in that. And that's why I believe we have to start teaching about trusts and wills. And having your house in order because all of those people, I would probably say ninety percent of. All of those folks that passed away did not have any type of estate uh setup or trust. Or any of that setup. And so we have lost so much. Uh uh in that uh equity and so much legacy and passing on generational wealth. Which for since since at least nineteen sixty-eight, we came so far. And now we're losing all of it.
And we used to have what the highest, what, home ownership of uh and single-family homes.
That's right.
Wayne County area and that's and sad, but you know, one thing about the pandemic is. There is more of an outreach with people trying to find out about wills and people shouldn't feel bad about not having one. I have a little story. Um you you know, I was setting up a um a clinic on a probate court. And one of my guest speakers was the Honorable David Schamansky. Who uh related this story about how his own father, who at one time was the head of the Wayne County Probate Court. And his father to Judge Frank Schamansky and Judge David Schamansky and who also served on Wayne County, I think as a treasurer. How the chief of the Wayne County Probate Court did not have a will and passed away in testate. And that's because people don't wanna face their own mortality, you know, they don't wanna think about the idea of that. But we'd be glad to help out with that. Maybe we can have.
We could probably do some clinics because, yeah, I've interviewed on Robin Legal Attorney, Terrence Quinn, and I just interviewed attorney Teresa Rich. They do estate planning and probate. Our firm, um McCoyn Associates, we do that. But yeah, to your point and what Tracy is saying, we definitely should have some clinics. I myself, as I was talking to attorney Quinn, he was talking about how as an estate planning lawyer. He he felt it was very important for himself to have his own estate documents in order and for me too. And I've I've done that in the midst of the pandemic cuz he's like, how could you go telling people or preaching to them about.
That's right.
Your affairs in order and you don't even have your own.
Their own.
So I have to go on record that I have my affairs in order. I have. I have to go on record that I have my affairs in order. I have a will. I have for my heir. And um, you know, everything is all set up so that we doesn't have to go through probate court. And I also have advanced directives. Right. And she's to be my patient advocate or my husband's to be my patient advocate to make decisions about. How long I'm going to be in a COVID coma, the whole nine yards. It's there, it's on file at Beaumont Hospital. And people need to do it. Yes, we'd be glad to do a clinic. But Commissioner, I do want to turn the discussion to two things before you leave. What's going on with the new Wayne County Justice Center? I hear it's supposed to be finished by the end of next year, third quarter of next year. And I want to talk about this twenty twenty-one budget. It's interesting. There was uh, an article that came out about outsourcing of the budget. Because um, no one was available to fill that role.
Yes. Well, you know what? I'm not sure, so sure about the availability of someone to fill that role. Um, a- as I was explaining earlier, we are the legislative branch of Wayne County. And then we have the county executive who is Warren Evans, who uh, is the. Actually, he runs Wayne County. He is the CEO of Wayne County. And so what we do is we empower him and actually. The constituents of Wayne County empower him to uh, do his job. And to, as far as contracts are concerned, to do his due diligence. And there's a, a procurement process and. And all of that. And so what we do as commissioners is we come, come behind him and we vet. Those contracts. We make sure that there has been a proper process to bidding. Uh, i- in the procurement process. And um, that has not came to us. Uh, as of yet. And so I.
I understand it's the contract for three hundred thousand for a firm in Troy. I think it's Raymond, the Raymond for, for uh, firm.
Right. And so what, what, what happens is, is if, if there is, and, and during COVID. There has been a lot of emergency-related contracts that the executive can process through. Uh, if, if they find that, you know, i- it's deemed a emergency. And or if it's under a certain amount, they can move, move. Forward with it again, uh, and under these COVID circumstances. And so for me, it's always, we need to make sure that we support Wayne County businesses. I was just in a uh, meeting last week. Where uh, we had some contracts for like marketing. And I'm like, okay. But it was, it was from outside of Wayne County. And, and then we had another contract that was from out of state. And I'm like, okay, uh, are we really working uh, hard enough? Uh, to try to vet and, and ensure that we're getting our uh, Wayne County business owners. Uh, to be a part of this. And so that, that's definitely something that I'm always concerned about. In, in my fight for jobs, not jails initiative, uh, is to ensure that we, uh, Wayne County residents. Uh, get as many uh, contracts that we can actually, you know, we of course have to be able to do the job. Um, and so that's my goal always.
I did hear uh, the Chair of the Commission, um, who's also my Commissioner Alicia Bell say that she hopes that that's, this is just a one-off situation. Where it's like a one-time only where this three hundred thousand dollar contract would be approved. And I understand that, that the contract could go up. As high as six hundred thousand. Um, but uh, there's nobody to fill the role, which I find interesting. Uh, that this, I think it's been for two years that um.
Right, right.
Budget Director in uh, Wayne County.
Right, yep. Um, well, yeah, we had an acting one for a short time and yeah. So it, that is a, it has been a problem. Uh, is that, that we should. I believe um, we had someone that was interviewing. For that position. And so we should have a, a director in sometime soon.
Great. And what about the jail? You mentioned uh, Wayne County jails, uh, that we have a new jail coming in that's connected up. With this Wayne County Justice Center. Is it on track? I see it rising on the horizon off of I seventy-five in Detroit. Any, any um, inside track on that?
So it is, um, it's coming together even through COVID. Uh, we've been trying to make sure we stay on top of it because we don't want another failed jail project. That's for sure. Um, and so we get like monthly or sometime every couple of weeks of, of report. Because you, we're not downtown and we're not on site. And uh, we don't want things to get biased. So we actually get physical pictures uh, of the progress and, and details of, of each. Area uh, of the jail because we have the, the actual courts. And then we have a part that's. That's the sheriff area or department. Then we have the juvenile uh, area. And, and so it, it's coming along, which is a good thing. It's, it's a, a, a good thing. Because that if you've ever been to the county jail that we have downtown, it is horrific. Yeah. And, and although, you know, some people said, you know, we could deal with it. I, I think uh, moving it to the location where it is, I think overall, even, even though it took us a long time. To get there or took them, I wasn't on the commission then. But it took a while for us to get to this place. I think everything is moving along accordingly. And uh, COVID didn't hold us back. Uh, to, you know, too far. We did get a little bit off track because you know, you had to. We had to deal with the work shortage, uh, the workers that couldn't, you know, come in due to COVID. But it is coming along, so.
Okay. And Commissioner, I would be remiss, you know, again, dealing with expungements as, as we deal, you know, as we just did this virtual clinic. We have, yes, we have clean slate. Let's, yes, we have Lake Shore Legal Aid, but now starting, um, you know, tomorrow, April eleventh. But really Monday, April twelfth, you're gonna have more people eligible for expungement. And as we, you know, we did this clinic today. I'm sure we'll have some future clinics. I know Attorney Martin has talked about do, working with the juveniles with expungement. There's a great need to have attorneys, like pay attorneys to help people get their records expunged. And I did talk to a representative from Warren Evans Office about this, uh, probably it was like a week ago. But I would, I definitely would just want to ask you if there's any efforts underway to, and to put funding. Um, into having attorneys. I would suggest, you know, we have, I'm a member of the Wayne County Criminal Defense Bar. So we're criminal defense attorneys. We already are doing indigent defense. So put some funding in there for those of us who are already doing the work on, on that side of it. We're, we're going to the district courts, we're going to the, to the circuit court. Um, into helping people to get their records cleared. You know, we try to do preventative work, but um, but there, you know, there's thousands of people now that. They, when I was doing the clinics before, a lot of people would come to me, there, it was only one felony. It was two misdemeanors. They weren't eligible. Now it's three felonies and it's unlimited misdemeanors. Now it depends on what the felonies are, what the misdemeanors are. You still have to have pre-screening eligibility. You have to have attorneys for that. You need to have people administratively helping with the process. And then you need to have attorneys going into court to advocate. So that we can, we can get, because I have so many people coming to me saying, look, I, 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 these felonies are hindering me from either getting a job. Or from advancing on my job. So I would just um, say to you Commissioner McCormick, we definitely need, we need to have. Because we're flooded. Michigan has plenty of attorneys, but we need to have funding there. And Wayne County, again, we've talked about the trash and, and. It's a depressed environment and it shouldn't be that way. There are folks that want to work, but their, their past records are hindering them. From, from either getting a job or advancing on their job.
And you know what? I am so glad that you mentioned that. Cause you know, one of the initiatives that I work on is called Jobs Not Jails. We need to focus on making sure that those folks, they need to have uh, their records expunged. That they have the opportunity, uh, as well as education-based incarceration. Meaning when you're in uh, jail, if you're locked up, then we need to figure out how we can help you. With the things that you need so you can be better on the outside. So I will.
That diploma, the diploma, the PD, all of that. But I'm sorry.
And we, and I also fought for them to have the opportunity. When they came out, they can go to Wayne County. Uh, Community College free. Uh, we, we uh, put that together uh, in a resolution uh, last year. So I don't know if you are aware of that, but they can, if they come out of county jail, they can. Um, so I am willing and able to work with you on whatever you need. And in fact, if you can send me a note on what that would look like for you. What the pay would look like, how many, how many attorneys would, would we need? To, to help with, with this new initiative. Since it's rolling out now. You know, in the metro Wayne County area, maybe we need, you know, fifteen attorneys that could get, you know. Uh, get into that role and roll it out and help a hundred residents or how many ever. You know, I just need a framework to work from. Then I can go to the commission and say, look, this is how we can get this program done. We can help X amount of offenders. And then we can help them get into some of these. Uh, jobs that we have for this county jail and for all of these other projects that we have. Matter of fact. We have um, a uh, a, a contractors fair that's coming up on the twenty-seventh of April. For Wayne County. So anyone is looking, janitorial, um, um. Uh, laundry, a- all of, all of the little things that we need in that county jail, we're having a major contractors fair. For that. Uh, and so please.
Is it virtual or, is it virtual or in person?
No, it's, it's, it, it's probably a little bit of both, but I, I just literally, and when, when you said that, I should have mentioned it earlier. I just literally got the information yesterday. And I believe I put it on um, the Facebook uh, site. Let me just.
Send it to us. Yeah, send it to us. We'll share it on our social medias, you know, because we have political coffee. We're on Facebook, uh, Twitter. Um, YouTube, we're gonna, we got a website that'll be rolling out. I don't know, we, I think we're working on Instagram. So yeah, we'll definitely. Once you send it to us.
Okay, great, great. So. Yeah, but if you send me a note on that, definitely I will try to get that done. Uh, and, and somehow if we can uh, tie it, we'll, we'll talk, we'll talk offline.
The Wayne County Commission could have its own version of uh, Wayne County Commission Clean Slate Project.
There you go. There you go. Yes, yes. So just let me know. And uh, thank you so much for having me today. I really enjoyed myself and uh, got, got some great ideas too, so.
You, you have a mo- a model for a lot of things that I think need to be emulated, like countywide, citywide, statewide, you know, keep doing what you're doing. I mean, you know, forget about whatever that your predecessor, you know, forget him, you know, what do they say? Bye Felicia.
Well, thank you so much Commissioner McCormick for coming on today and talking to us about the new Wayne County Commission Youth Council, the War on Trash. The Justice Center, the budget, uh, the committee that you chair on Health and Human Services, uh, health and welfare. And um, it's just fantastic. And thank you for watching. Like, subscribe and share this video because there's so much great information that came out today from Commissioner Monique Baker McCormick. Who's also a veteran of the US Army. We'd love to have you come back and maybe give us some regular updates on what.
Yeah, updates. This was, this was beautiful.
I will definitely do that. Just let me know when I'm, I'm here for you. All right. Take care. Thank you.
Again, political coffee with, with Robin and Tracy and special guest Commissioner uh, Monique Baker McCormick. So everybody have a blessed day.
All right, bye-bye.